Good evening. I want to call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And first thing we have is the millage rate hearing. Have a full quorum of commissioners. Mr. Johnson, are you going to walk us through some of that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you're ready, we can go ahead and I can walk you through the information we have. This is our final millage rate public hearing. All the other public hearings have been advertised properly and have been conducted. What you have before you tonight is a recommendation from the staff to leave the millage rate at the 5.999 mills. That is an increase over the rollback rate. There's been a lot of discussion about the commissioners raising taxes. This is the way we're required by law to advertise this as a tax increase. You are not raising the millage rate, you're leaving the millage rate where it is. The values have gone up, so the law requires us to advertise it as a tax increase. So we've talked about what it does and what it generates. We did run some numbers for you for a home with a fair market value of $225,000. This is approximately $12.60 of a proposed tax increase. That gives you kind of the overview of the millage rate itself. You have all the calculations, the rollback rate in front of you. We are asking that when you do set the millage rate, county, sorry, the staff is recommending the 5.999. Stay where it is for M and O. We are asking to roll back the debt service millage rate. We do not need .89 mills for our debt service for next year. We've calculated that we need .84. So that's going to leave .05 mills that we're asking to be reassigned to the fire millage rate to be able to help that millage rate be able to become more self-supported on its own. Currently, we have to supplement that with IPTF taxes, insurance premium tax fund, funding. So we want to be less reliant on that as we move forward and as our fire department continues to grow. So there's been some question about, you know, what do you do with the additional monies that are realized here? I don't think I have to tell anybody in this room or certainly don't have to tell you all that Columbia County is still one of the fastest growing counties in the nation, not just in the state. We have tremendous needs. We have a lot of infrastructure needs. We've discussed that. I was very attuned to the board's wishes at the last millage rate hearing to try to figure out how we could appropriate some of this funding and other funding to help with some of our traffic issues in the county. We're working on those budgets. And then also, we're dealing with fire here. But we also have a plan to help the sheriff's office with some additional necessary equipment that the sheriff needs. And I know that this board is very interested in funding public safety and infrastructure. So those are the things that we're looking to do with it. I'll answer any specific questions that you may have. You do have a five-year history of the millage rate. And you can see where we have actually rolled the millage rate back each of the, each in 15, 16, 17, and 18. I'm sorry, in 19, we actually rolled it back. This will be the first time we're actually leaving it where it is since 2015.
And our millage rate is second lowest in the state, is that correct?
So it is. When you look at the M and O millage rate, now, there's a lot of things you have to take into consideration when you're looking at the millage rate, because a lot of other counties have, they'll say, okay, this is my M and O, and it may be lower than our 5.999. But then if you go back and add, you know, maybe they have a fire district, then maybe they have another public safety district, and they have a tax for this and a special district for that. So when you do all the calculations, you'll find out Columbia County is certainly amongst the lowest. Of our benchmark counties, we're certainly the second lowest. And in the state, we are extremely low per county our size.
What do you think the fire department will be able to stand?
We're still, we're still, we're still dependent about $1.5 million on IPTF or will still be between a million and 1.5 on IPTF. So the value of a mill now is almost $6 million. So if you do that math real quick, you're looking at .2 maybe. So we added .05 this time, but you'd need another .15 mill to get it where you wouldn't have to hit IPTF. But at the same time, between now and then, we'll be growing the fire department and going through the other phases and having to buy additional equipment. So at that time, that number may move away from us a bit.
For the two stations that were...
Correct, that's correct. We'll have to staff both of those two new stations. And again, that goes back to, a lot of people, and I am fiscally conservative, and I know that you all are conservative, and we don't take this lightly. This is not a tax-and-spend county, contrary to popular belief. But we are a growing county, and we have additional needs. And if we just leave, if we roll the millage rate back and we don't take advantage of that growth in our digest, at some point, we're going to be behind. We're not going to be able to add those two fire stations. We're not going to be able to add firefighters or deputies or do additional road projects. The funding is just not going to be there. So we have a long-term strategy. I think this fits into our long-term strategy. Again, would it be nice to roll it back? Yes, I mean, and we could, and we can make it work. But I think the needs outweigh the need to do that at this time. That's the staff's recommendation, obviously, not speaking for the board.
Clear, we discussed, I guess, two weeks ago, the debt. We can't fast pay debt anymore than this.
Correct, so you can fast pay certain debts. So we can't, this is a general obligation bond that was voted on by the voters. This general obligation bond has a certain term to it. So the investors that bought those bonds expected a certain return over a certain period of time. So we cannot call this before the call date on this one. So we just have to, as we have additional money, we apply it, and we just take less taxes to pay for it. But no, we can't pay it any faster. Other debt that we have out there, and we do not have a lot of debt, y'all know our debt that we are allowed to have versus what we actually have is very, very, very low. We're very proud of that. But we are fast-forwarding other debt. And I think you all know that we're using SLOs dollars currently to fast-forward other debt service. And so we can pay that faster and using sales tax dollars to do that. So everybody's paying, not on the backs of the property owners in the county.
Questions?
I'd like to point out, for the general education of the public who's here with us today, that the bottom line of what you see on your tax bill that you receive at the House, that's not all going to the numbers that we're talking about today. About 70% of that goes to education here. And we do not control that portion of the bill that you receive at home. Of the 30% that we do get, about half of that goes to rule of law, which is our courts and the sheriff's office. And so a very small percentage of the bill that you're paying goes to this general fund with general government and the items that we're talking about today. So, yeah, I've had a lot of questions this week about where's all that money going? And so I just wanted to point out how much of this actually goes toward education and not under our control.
And to that point, we, Mr. Johnson mentioned that we have lowered the millage for the last five years.
Actually, I believe it's five out of the last six. One of them's not on there, but I believe it's five out of the last six years.
There were a couple of times there where the Board of Education did raise there. People have approached me saying, no, you guys raised taxes a couple of years ago. And no, that wasn't us. That was, that was the Board of Education. They're allowed that maneuver.
And we don't control them or their rates. They're autonomous.
School days when they go to school or any of that?
That being said, I also think that they do a very good job of being very fiscally conservative, running an amazingly fast-growing education. Well done, education system. Right budget.
Any other commissioner comments? Any public comments? Hearing none, I'll add the motion to adjourn right into the commission meeting.
I adjourn, sir.
Second, on a favor, raise your right hand. We're adjourned, and we'll go right into... I want to call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners August 4, 2020, meeting to order. Have the commission, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Malir to open us with the invocation.
Thank you, sir. Please bow your head. Lord, thank you for this beautiful day, and thank you for the blessings that we have, including the right to assemble and govern ourselves. Thank you and for all of our blessings and help us as we make decisions this evening. And these decisions affect our neighbors and the citizens of this county. And some of these decisions are not easy. They're hard decisions, but please guide us and be sure our actions are based on truth and fairness. In your name we pray, amen.
Stand for the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Again, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the meetings from previous meeting, minutes from previous meeting, mission booklet from June 21st, the Board of Commissioners, June 21st, the millage rate public hearing, and the July 28th, the rate public hearing. And I'll exception, I accept a motion to approve all three as one.
No moves, sir.
On a favor, raise your right hand. And let's see, we have the proclamation for ten.
Yes, sir, that's just added to the agenda tonight. Yes, sir.
Right.
The item I 3A, if you're so inclined.
We'll move straight down to special recognition. We have the 21st for the first quarter, the Building Standards and Fire Marshal Team. Alan, I believe you're going to handle that. How to do it?
Not all of you?
All of them.
Come up here.
Who's leading this team?
All is. Come on, Paul.
You won team of the quarter, and nobody will take credit for leading the team. Somebody just needs to hold this for me. I got to present it to someone.
Byron, now, get up there, Byron, you take it.
All right, I'm going to sit it here, and one of you guys pick it up on the way, on the way back to your seats. I'm here today to present to the team of the quarter. Thank you very much, sir. It's like a hot potato. It's an award, people, come on. To the Fire Marshal's Department. Now, I'm going to read the nomination. It says that during the Columbia County closures, the Building Standards Fire Marshal Team was tasked with working towards keeping the development community operating as efficiently as it could. The government closure could lead to many unintended consequences for the public, and this group of people worked long hours to ensure that our citizens were able to keep their new home on schedule. They worked hard to ensure that work was being done properly in a time when it would be easy to stay at home and not care. They worked long hours to ensure that every inspection that was requested was completed. This group worked hard to perform more inspections during the closure than were done in the same month the previous year while doing it with less staff. And that's the actual wording of the nomination. For those of you, most of you in this room are aware that during this pandemic, we've had a lot of issues we've had to face as government and especially trying to take care of our staff and make sure that they were safe while at the same time operating for the citizens of the county. And in this team, one of the things that never slowed down, never slowed down, as you can actually hear accelerated, was the construction and the growth of Columbia County. We did not want anyone to have to wait, anyone to have to pay more interest, anyone to have to pay a penalty, anyone that was late getting into their business or home because of us having to watch out for the safety of our people. And these people before you, this team, these teams, Fire Marshal and permits, they never hesitated to jump in and pick up any extra slack that was needed to keep the county growing, to keep people moving forward, and take care of those people whose applications and were waiting to get into their buildings they were relying on. And you guys were true heroes. And I mean that very sincerely. I'm not speaking hyperbole. You guys were amazing during those very, very difficult months. And you were inspiring to all of us on the commission. I can't tell you how many times we sent our best to you. I hope you were aware that we had you in our thoughts. And I just greatly appreciate all that you did, and this is very, very well deserved. Thank you so much.
Well, it's an honor and a privilege to work for Columbia County and have a great department, have each other's backs.
Chicken baskets.
Well, this team together, you know, and licensing and permitting is in as well. You know, during that time, you know, these guys came in, the guys and ladies came in and performed like no other. But with the support we had, you know, not, I mean, everybody thought the county was shut down. But I was always called an IT, I called planning, I called engineering. There are multiple divisions and departments that supported us. Finance came in and supported us so we could do our job, so we could be seen and be recognized. Love you, everyone of y'all on this team. It starts with you, the commission, and the managers, you know, it'd be Scott, Glenn, Matt, you all supporting us and expecting the pride. Scott, you talked about pride. You know, the global, we went from the silos from each department, and it came to the, if you want to call it the universal circle. This county circled around each other, supported us that we could do this job. I love each and every one of you. It's a great place to work, and we appreciate it.
Thank all of you. We got to get a picture.
Pretend y'all like each other tonight.
Yeah, come on, all the way from social. Turn sideways.
Thank you all so much.
I'll look at the picture in the roundabout. I don't know who the backs are. Nicely done.
Thank you all for making us look good.
Cowards.
Take us with you.
Thank you very much, guys. Okay, commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Each one of these items has been through committee and received the necessary votes to be placed on the consent agenda. If it still meets your approval, I'll accept a motion to approve them all as in one vote.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Questions? On a favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Great, second reading of 20-24, I believe that's you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir, I make a motion to approve the second reading of Resolution 20-24, amending the fee schedule for Columbia County Community Events Contract General Agreement to be effective after the second reading.
Second. Ben?
Sir, this is a, this resolution amends the fee schedule. It's to compensate for a recent increase in requests for the use of the town center park and the amphitheater for graduation ceremony. So it sets a fee of $1,500 for a four-hour block at a time that the park will be closed only for graduations.
Any questions or comments? On a favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I believe you're still up.
I do have one more. I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 20-23 as presented and authorize the chairman to sign all required forms and documents.
Second.
I will say that we had some fairly robust discussions between ourselves about pulling the millage rate back. I'd like to do that. Keeps government in check, even though it's a small number. It feels good to continue to roll it back. But this year with COVID, and we just don't know how the sales taxes are going to play themselves out, thought it best to leave it as it is for this year instead of pulling it back.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just add, in the face of all that, our, the first question among all of us was what can we do with that money? To serve the taxpayers and where is it going to serve them best? Mr. Johnson did a great job of finding places, homes for the money, and we have a new request. I mean, the request from the sheriff is a new one. It's a blessing to be able to respond to that.
Comments or questions? On a favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
No, actually.
Oh.
Goes to me, sir. But before I address this first one, can we have the applicant here, is Mr. Rivers here? Anyone regarding this item? Questions before I made a motion? Oh, I can ask staff or I can ask, um, this, there's concerns of restaurant and a drive-through with the fast food operation. Is there a clear understanding of exactly how they're acquiring setback for this and where this traffic pattern is going to go? There's a somewhat rudimentary design shown, but my understanding is there's some question as to what actually will happen?
We currently don't know what will be in this, I guess we call it a strip center. They've come in asking for a variance to the buffer requirement. There's a 30-foot buffer between this property and the residential property below it. They're asking for about anywhere from 3.2 foot to a 4-point, I forget the exact number. So anywhere from three to four-foot encroachment into that buffer to an, in order to put a drive-through behind the building. This drive does include some neighboring property. They have told us today, as late as 3 o'clock today, that they do not have permission from the neighboring property for their driveway to be on the neighboring property. They feel confident they can get it, but they do not have it. We don't know what's going in there. We just know they're asking for a buffer variance so they can put a drive-through behind this center for a potential restaurant. You can see here on this drawing, this piece of driveway here, not on their property.
Wasn't this previously approved for another use?
It was presented to us years ago for a kind of a, I forget the exact layout, but it had a standalone restaurant and some additional shopping beside it. I'm not sure what it was, but it was not this plan. The plan presented to commission to get the commercial zoning is not what they presented here to build.
But it's still within what we approved.
Still meets the zoning that was approved, but it's not what they showed you they were going to do.
So if it was a bait and switch, we got nothing now we can do about it. It just is what it is.
They currently have the zoning unless the commission votes to change their zoning. That's not what you're voting on here, but if you choose to do so.
Buffer.
I'm just asking.
Now, the applicant does say Kyoto.
Kyoto was the original intended use.
Okay.
Property sits higher than the neighboring residential rights. So lights coming around this would be over a...
No, sir, if you go back the trees to where it was at. One of the conditions that the planning commission put on their recommendation to the board of commissioners was that they show on this drawing the fence being along this line, which is down below the retaining wall. Planning commission voted to recommend to you that the wall, the fence be put on top of the retaining wall. That's a retaining wall that's about seven foot tall at this point, tapers down to nothing on this end. There'll be a six-foot fence, if this were approved, along that line to block some of the light. However, like you say, as the car is driving through here, those headlights will shine property. There's also a retaining wall here that the drive-through is actually elevated above the parking below it. This is also a retaining wall. It's about 11-foot tall retaining wall at this point. The pond is actually below the drive. If you're on Autumn Trail looking this way, you will see 11-foot tall retaining wall here. This retaining wall, the planning commission required them to stucco it or stack stone it, make it decorative, because it will be quite visible. But the other questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them.
And the applicant is not in attendance still?
That the driveway to my right is not on their property.
Right, the property line is here. This is the property line. There's an agreement, a joint use agreement for the driveway. It's very hard to see, but there's a faint line here. That is the recorded joint use agreement to allow both the Longhorn property next door and this property to have a single driveway. But beyond that square I've drawn there, there is no, that's allowing this work to happen outside of that easement. The temporary construction easement, it's very hard to see, but it kind of follows this line here. But that was for the construction of the driveway to get into the Longhorn parking lot. Lot of unanswered questions on this piece is what it boils down to.
So in asking for a variance, they don't actually have what he would characterize as a site plan?
If they brought this to us today, we could not approve it. If, even if you granted the variance based on what we have, we could not approve this plan because it's built on somebody else's property.
Which that's what gives the staff a little bit of concern, is that we have a piece of property that was zoned for one use, commercial, and now they're putting a different product in there. Now they're asking for a variance, and we have, really don't have a really clear understanding of what's going in there. So we have a little bit of pause just from the policy side. When I say policy, I don't mean policy manual, I mean public policy side of approving a variance on a project you don't even know why you're approving the variance on it.
Little speculative. Well, with all that being the case, I just don't feel comfortable moving forward with this application. I'd like to make a motion to disapprove the request for a variance to Section 90-139. to Section ninety dash one thirty-nine, buffers and screening, and ninety dash one forty-seven I three, use provisions for property located at tax map zero six eight, zero nine five, and zero five four G, subject to the conditions enumerated in the July sixteenth.
Second.
Any discussion?
What does this, as far as if they want to come back and change what the variance, can they just start all over as of time? Don't even.
The variance, they can come right back, or they can shrink the building footprint by four feet and not need the variance.
The motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
The next motion is mine also, sir, and I, again, I'd ask, is the applicant here for the church on Applin Harlem Road?
Might come up and.
Thank you for joining us. Looking at your.
I want to say, hey, Dean, just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name's Dean Newman, and my address is three nineteen Sand Hills Lane in Evans.
Thank you for being here. And I fully support the expansion of your church, but I do have some concerns about the current design and the site we have regarding the traffic pattern also. And I think that there was a discussion with staff earlier that we were talking about other access. Can elaborate a little bit, Mr. Schlauchner?
Yes, currently, GDOT has written a letter to the applicant stating they have intent, have intentions of granting a right-in, right-out access to them at this point. They will be criteria that have to be met to get that right-in, right-out. I believe the ultimate hope for that driveway would be to a full access. I believe y'all stated that to us early on that you really wanted a full access movement there. But at this point, without full design, right-in, right-out is all GDOT's willing to commit to. In order to go back towards Harlem, go south on two twenty-one, somebody would have to make a right-out, do a U-turn, or exit out the rear. Lonergan, I always say it wrong, Hume Home, Lonergan Hume Road, that gives access to Nature's Way and also back to two twenty-one. There is some major wetlands that will have to be crossed to get there. I'm not sure if you've studied those costs to get across there or not. That'll be something for the applicant to take that question. And I'm not so sure that GDOT has committed to that drive as well. That, I have not seen any kind of commitment to that driveway. So that does have concern about access to the site based on the right-in, right-out.
Dean, you're good with what the state has said because go forward with this and own it.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're fine with the right-in, right-out access. And as you may know, it's going to be two or three years before we break ground. This is not something we're going to do immediately. The rear access at Lonergan Home Road, you know, I, I think through phase one of our project at least, we can train our people if they're going back toward I twenty, and then they can go out the rear exit of the property, get back to the interstate at Nature's Way. So we're, we're fine with what the DOT has told us. Obviously, as was said, that it would be ideal if we had full access there and hopefully at some point down the road that we will have full access. Right now, we're fine with what the DOT has approved.
Honestly, one of my concerns being two or three years down the road when you're ready to develop it, it'll be more graphic and it'll be a tougher fight with the DOT. If we were to approve this as it stands, does planning, does staff upgrade requirements as an adjustment from DOT were to come down the pipe? If so, in the next two to three years, is that, what, what is the process of adjusting this on the fly if we approve this plan, if we approve this plan as it is, with DOT having oversight of the access ingress? Is.
GDOT would have full control over access to two twenty-one. We all understand that. We have no, no say in that access. Go into a full access, I think will be a good thing for us. I think this plan stands a much better chance of having good flow if they get full access.
Right.
Major concerns, if, if that right-in, right-out stays right-in, right-out, and this is fully developed, I don't know where their, their, their patrons are coming from, where their members are coming from. Are they coming from Harlem? Are they coming from, from Applin? We don't know. Until we see their traffic study, we don't know. But if we have a majority of the traffic coming from the south, that majority of traffic trying to get back south, the only way they can do it is to come out the back entrance, back exit. What does that do to Lonergan Home Road? That, that road's not meant for a ton of traffic, but again, we don't have a traffic study to tell us today what that's going to look like during full build-out.
Dean, was there a reason y'all didn't do the traffic study? I didn't see one package.
We, we, our civil engineer is here, and we discussed that with him. I think that they said at this time that, that it really wasn't something that we had to do. So we chose not to do it right now. We're, we're confident enough in the property and the location of the property and the development, the plan that you see there that we, we feel like that the access issue will, will work out at the appropriate time in the future.
Pastor, I'm going to give you a little room here.
I'm not the pastor.
Oh, you're.
I was going to correct you.
Our pastor is here, but.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see pastor, he went back there. I'm going to give you a little room here. None of us can see the future, but at the time that you were planning this and thinking about purchasing the property, nobody could tell you, and we couldn't tell you, that the biggest development in Columbia County history was going to be right there.
Right.
And that there were going to be traffic requirements that exceeded the capacity just because of the club car facility.
Right.
So now the groundwork and everything has changed about that intersection, and you're going to be directly in the path and with a, a traffic snarl that none of us can foresee two or three years down the road. And, and hope is, is not a plan that I like to presume on. I do it on Sundays.
Well.
But every other day of the week, I've got to go with, with, with the facts and experience of traffic plans and, and numbers and.
Yeah.
What's this going to look like?
Yeah.
On a busy day.
Well, keep in mind that a large portion of our traffic for the week is going to be on Sunday morning, which most of the business part, I'm guessing, will probably not be working Sunday morning. Of course, Amazon, I guess they might work twenty-four seven.
Get that two-hour delivery things.
That's right. So, you know, it, it certainly will be busy, but, but our busiest time is going to be on Sunday morning, and then we'll have a little bit of traffic Sunday night, and then we'll have some Wednesday night, and then we'll have some very sparse traffic throughout the rest of the week. So, again, we're, we're fine. We've, we've had a number of discussions about this. We've, we talked to Columbia County about it as well, and we're certainly open to working with the county on whatever they think is the best solution there for the front of the property. The, the solution that was brought to us was that, that they wanted us to put in a roundabout there in front of the property, and they asked the church to pay one hundred percent of the roundabout, which, you know, after some discussion and consulting with some folks that are more familiar with this type thing, and I do understand that the county has invested a good bit of money in the road improvements that are there. We, we just felt like that it was a little bit too big of an ask for us to pay for the entire roundabout. I have.
And that we won't be paying for it. County won't be using that right. If you go, if this gets approved.
State comes back and says you've got to put a roundabout there, then what?
Well, we, we've consulted with our, our US Congressman, Rick Allen, as well as Don Grant, gotten some thoughts from them. There are maybe some creative ways that they could be involved and possibly shift some money to, you know, to put a roundabout there. So again, it, it's down the road, and we're, we're not concerned about it as far as going ahead and closing on this property and pursuing our plans for what we want to do there.
Is your closing contention upon this rezoning? You won't purchase it if you don't get it.
That's right.
Is that correct?
Right.
Not correct? Not exact.
Please come up so we can hear you.
Brad Witt, eight three four Madeline Drive Harlem. And, you know, one of the things, I live right here, and I've talked with Trey as well, and we understand the challenge that's right there. I live there. My family tonight is spread all over Columbia County at four and five different places for Harlem Pop Warner, football, Blanchard Park, those sorts of things. And there's nothing in West Columbia County for the families like we have the ability to put here that won't cost the county anything to upkeep it, staff it, those sorts of things. Is it a challenge? Yeah. Do we understand that? Yes. But are we willing to move forward? I am. I am. I believe, you know, we had the opportunity years ago, turned down the actual, the front right corner of the club car spot. So we had an option there years ago. And when the Lord shut that down, looked right across the road and thought, wow, a church would look really good there up on the hill. And so right now, if you had to ask me, the answer is yes on that. And because I think what it's going to give for the county. Tonight, we had to pay a young teenage girl to get one of my children to one of the ballgames because there's nothing in West Columbia County for our families. And we have the ability to put something here, very much like Wesley. So Wesley, during the nights, during the week, all of this part of Columbia County gets the benefit of that church's location. And we have the ability, if the county, we have a letter actually from GDOT agreeing not just to give us access, but actually agreeing to work with us towards that end. Not a promise, but an agreement to work with us to, to handle the issue here. And so if we can do that, then we have the ability in West Columbia County for the families to have a spot that doesn't cost the county anything. And, and I get, you know, taking it from the county or costing taxes or something like that.
Actually, we don't even.
But, but we have the ability here for the families in West Columbia County to have a spot where we can minister them, you know, without having to spread them all over the county. We understand that, we understand the challenges, but we're willing to work through those.
That leads me to one of my questions. The planning commission put us some of the conditions, items about lighting for your athletic fields. There'll be athletic fields there. So, and you're talking about the, the activities for, for the families out there. Mr. Newman kind of alluded to the fact it would be mostly Sunday traffic and a little Wednesday, and it would be sparse on the other days. So I'm concerned about those four hundred trucks a day.
No, no, I get that.
Coming out of Amazon, and every few minutes you got a truck, and then you got minivans coming out. I'm, I'm concerned about that.
I understand that as well. I mean, my family drives that road every day. And I, I wish that when we had, when we had, as a county had constructed this, had considered the other side of the road.
Well, I mean, it's the, the nature of that character area is industrial, so that's why I worry about the minivans and the Suburbans and the kids and, and the families coming in and out because there's going to be a lot of, lot of big trucks.
Sure, sure.
Are you willing, sir, to undertake a traffic study?
Sir.
Are you willing to undertake a traffic study for this? We do ask, do ask developers.
Before you answer that question, my feeling is, there's a lot of support for this. The only concern you should hear, traffic. I think it's a great.
The mission is, is, is definitely something that we strongly support. I strongly support the mission of you guys being there.
Yeah.
I, I want to get it out in the open. I want us all to be clear and sure exactly what the challenges are you'll be facing, what possible issues could come down the pike. Just make sure that you are fully prepared. And, and that's, that's all we're trying to establish here. It's in no way trying to deter you or, we just want to make sure that everything is.
Yeah.
In that regards, the question about the traffic study, I think is a valid question. At least you'll have an idea.
Because it is customary for, for folks who are getting, getting property rezoned to be asked to do a traffic study.
Okay. If, if that's what you would like for us to do, then I, I think we can certainly do that.
And agree to abide by whatever that engineer comes up with?
Be your engineer, but still.
Well, and our engineer is here. Bo, do you have any, any thoughts or comments on?
Well, it's a party, Bo. Come on down.
Post Slaughter, four twenty Gemstone Court, Evans, Georgia. The main reason for the traffic study, establish the traffic counts for the main access to highway. And of course, they don't come cheap. And we were trying to see if we could get something from DOT. They would say we could get, you know, access. And church is fully prepared to construct the driveway that needs to be constructed in that area. I talked to a traffic engineer, and he said he was prepared to do it and just didn't want to spend the twelve, fifteen thousand dollars to do it if we weren't going to get through the zoning. And it wasn't made a stipulation as to have to have the traffic study for the zoning. So when the church was fine, you know, with the DOT's recommendation about the right-in, right-out, we said, okay, we'll go through the zoning, do the traffic study down the road. That's why we hadn't done it yet. Mainly financial, just.
But to understand the need for it.
Oh, yes. And we have all along. And I mean, it's that and sewer getting to the property, and there's several other things. But it's available. We know we can do the study, and we know we can adapt to whatever.
Bo, how, how do you feel about that Lonergan Hume? That access.
And there's a wetlands back there.
Serious wetlands back there.
Right. There's a lower area that we've walked, and we know that they're wet, and it's just a matter of mitigating them, and we'll keep it to a minimum. So, you know, that expensive to cross. And again, the road, we've spoken with one of the neighbors behind it, and he had some concerns that we're going to work with them to locate it beneficial to everybody.
Make the motion, or can we?
We can add a condition.
Add a condition that before they build, they have to have a traffic study?
You absolutely can. They can be part of the, the submittal when he submits his actual construction plans. They can have the traffic study, and I'm assuming you're using Mr. Castle?
Do you know him?
Yeah.
Shocking.
I've had him before. Mr. Castle, I can tell you right now, he's going to come in with a phased approach. They're building on a phased approach. His traffic study is going to follow their phasing, and he's going to say for phase one, the right-in, right-out functions. Phase two, he might say you need to add this. Phase three will be the full build-out. That'll give them time to go through those processes. What exactly this traffic study will say, I don't know, but I know it will be a phased approach.
Back again, Mr. Chairman, I think the biggest concern, and I'm, I'm for this project as well, just speaking from the staff's point of view, and I was on some of the calls with Dean and the pastor and, you know, so I've, I've been, I've been privy to some of this. I think our, our biggest concern is, is what does happen in five years? Let's just say a right-in, right-out works now. In, in two years or three years, a right-in, right-out does not work, and now we really have a problem out there. This, I'm not trying to saddle it on, on the applicant, but I'm saying what's out there today works as it is. In three to five years, if it doesn't work, then it's going to be, the county is going to be expected to step up to, to do what we're not doing today, which is.
I just went on the record saying we wouldn't do that.
Well, I understand, but what's going to happen is you're going to have a, just trying to understand.
I wouldn't be here.
A tremendous amount of public outcry because there's going to be so much traffic there that, that there may be some pressure. And I'm not saying that, that, that we would or wouldn't do that. I, I think we only have one opportunity to fix the access to this property, and that's during the zoning process. If we don't fix it during the zoning process, then, you know, there's a whole lot of ifs out there about what's going to happen in the future. And, you know, I've heard, I've heard, I've heard it repeatedly, they want a full service there. Y'all said that. They wanted full service. And, and Dean even said a minute ago, I, I, you know, in a few years, I'd really like to see full service. And I think the question is. And I think the question still comes back is how's it going to be paid for? And I understand that there were some commitments from DOT and also from the congressman, and I certainly respect those folks. But I've been working in government a long time and until you have something in writing or until you have that check in hand, I think it's a lot of, you know, promises that are being made. And what I would hate to see is the church go forward with this property and then find out all of a sudden, you know, they have a million dollar investment that they need to make and they can't make it. They're not going to be able to make it. Or maybe they can and they don't want to make it, whatever. I don't want to saddle that with them. I think it's in the best interest of all involved to try to figure this access out upfront. And Bo's right. DOT has a right in, right out. They've approved a right in, right out. And if we can all agree that a right in, right out will work for this property and that we can put enough property or put enough traffic on Lonergan Home Road through the wetlands to make it work, then I think it's a slam dunk. I think it's easy. But I think that we all have concerns that are right in, right out. And the traffic going along Lonergan Road through the wetlands is going to be a problem. So those are the things I think we have to kind of work out ahead of time. Not, you know, go ahead and zone it and then say, well, in three or four, five years, we'll figure it out. Because I think in three, four, five years, we, I've been down this road a lot. I've seen this happen a lot of times. And I know this commission has taken a lot of heat for traffic and problems. You know, you guys approved it and you didn't have the infrastructure in place. How many times have you heard that? So I don't want that to happen again. I certainly don't want it to happen in this area this big. But regardless, and we all know that I don't vote, I want to go on record and say I'm in support of the project. I think there's a need for it and I think Brad was right. There is a need for it out there. But I think we're all, we would be remiss if we don't answer these hard questions first and get answers to them before we move forward. But that's just coming from the staff's perspective. I'll leave it up to the board.
Questioner Allen, would you consider adding to your motion an extra condition that if in three years we're not under construction, that it reverts back to the original zoning and we have to revisit all of this? Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
I don't have an objection to that.
Let's say that it is under construction and it gets built, but in three years it needs a full access.
I don't know that that's a.
I mean, if we commit to it now, whatever their engineer says now, we're committed to it forever. But if it's not started in three years, we start over and get a new traffic study. Because in three years it will have changed.
I think, I think the issue is really with us right now is the DOT has said that they think the ideal is to have a roundabout there. And, you know, we want safe access for our members, just like everybody else wants safe access for across the street and all of the other folks that live in that area. The problem is that, you know, we've been given numbers everywhere from three hundred thousand dollars to a million and a half dollars for a roundabout. And, you know, we're not ready to put a roundabout in right now. We're certainly not ready to spend three hundred thousand to a million and a half dollars on a roundabout. And so with us not knowing what those numbers are, there's no way that we could really commit to something like that.
I want to reinforce my support for the project. I'd like to save heartache on both ends for your parishioners who are suddenly presented with an outrageous cost for a project that's necessary. And for us and our taxpayers all over the county are not going to be able to support that for one facility. I don't want anybody to be unhappy. Certainly your parishioners. That's a hard thing to take back to them.
Yeah. Well, and as I've said to Mr. Johnson and others, you know, throughout this process, we want, we want safe access and we certainly are fine with a roundabout. But with the property being right across the street from a very important part of Columbia County and that most of the benefit of the traffic of the roundabout is going to benefit across the street, that's why we felt like that some type of partnership to put in this roundabout was justified. And I know that, you know, people have said, well, if we do it for your church, then other people are going to come to us and they're going to ask the same thing. Well, my comment back would be, well, across the street was Columbia County's most important, one of Columbia County's most important assets, the business park. And there aren't business parks everywhere else in Columbia County. So that's why we felt like some type of a contribution or partnership with Columbia County was justified. And, you know, we have heard that the county is really not interested in doing that. And that's when we went out and we started talking to other folks to see if possibly some funds could be shifted to this project. Our church is two hundred and forty some odd years old here at Washington Road. It was established in seventeen seventy-four. This church is going to be here from now until Jesus comes back, whether that's five years, a hundred years, two hundred years or whatever. And there's nothing more that we want than to have safe access for our members and for this to be a great facility for Columbia County. And I can tell you from the church's standpoint, we're going to be willing to do whatever is safe for our members and for the folks across the street. But for us to stand here right now and say, okay, well, we'll put in a three hundred thousand to a million and a half dollar roundabout, number one, I don't have the authority to do that. Our church is the only one that has the right to vote to do that. All I can tell you is that if this zoning is approved, that we're going to make this a beautiful, nice facility, a safe facility, and we're going to do whatever we have to do to make sure that it works and that it's safe.
Can I ask Mr. Slaughter a question? When we invested what we invested for the road system at the park, we felt like what we've done and the amount of money we've spent is how much?
North of a million dollars on the intersection.
So we felt like that was safe for that part moving forward for us as far as however far out.
Right. That intersection.
Safe for the park.
That intersection functions with the T intersection as it is. It won't function at a four-way, which is, brings this conversation. So it functions today safely based on what we have out there.
Would have for as long as we continued to develop the park out. We wouldn't have had to improve that intersection.
Not today. Now eventually when that road blows up and it becomes a four lane through there instead of a two lane, possibly. But for today's, yes, sir, it functions. Have y'all have any idea of a traffic split? Have y'all even like looked at your splits on traffic at all?
Seventy percent. North. Right in, right out, they'd have back entrance.
Right. And so they're going to go back out. So now, based on what you're saying, you're building three hundred, in the phase one, you're saying three hundred twenty-five parking spaces. You're saying two hundred cars roughly are coming from the north that are going to be going down Lonergan Home. We're saying that we're going to have church Sunday morning and Sunday evening. So all those cars are coming at the same time. That kind of leads us to our concern with that if we don't have full access on Appleton Harlem, we're putting all those cars on the backside. We're going to have to do a traffic impact study on that backside. Just a thought here, this is something we ought to think about. If you're going to invest the kind of money you have to to put turn lanes on Lonergan Home, go across those wetlands, I mean, you've got a pretty good investment right there. Could you not shove that investment to the front and maybe get something ahead of time so that you don't have to come back three years from now and put a roundabout in? That just seems like you're spending a lot of money on the back of the place that you could be spending on the front and get ahead of the game instead of getting behind the paywall.
Yes, sir. And then depending on, you know, what the traffic count shows on the back, may not be that, you know, right turn lane only.
Right.
We don't need a left turn lane.
No, no, but you get your D cell lane and crossing the wetlands and I don't know what your impact.
They don't cross the wetlands one way or the other. They want a rear access.
Regardless, you want a rear access.
Right. They want a secondary access. And then that's mainly for the use for the future. And also it'll have use, you know, during the phase one of, you know, the rec area and things like that for just smaller events. They'll have access right there where you don't have to put a lot of traffic there on the route. The roundabout, DOT actually, you know, did a study and calculated what it needed to be done there, which in all my years, that's one of the strangest intersections I've ever seen or driven or been a part of. Me, those trucks coming out still makes for a little tricky situation there. So I'm not a big fan of the roundabouts, but in that case, it, you know, it's everybody safe and slow and merged together. And the church, I believe, is well aware that that's probably going to be the end thing that's out there is roundabout instead of a red light. For the roundabouts. The amount for the wetland crossing is going to be minimal because of the road costs and everything. It would have been in whether it's dry or wet. Have an additional study done and shouldn't have to have any mitigation. Main cost back there will be the D cell lane. Might have to have a left turn lane.
There's no scale on here, so I couldn't tell how long that crossing there is. It looks big.
Yeah, that's the flood plain. The actual wetland is probably not except for smaller area.
It's labeled wetlands, that's why I was. Engineer?
Architect.
Oh.
But it's a smaller area. And I mean, it's what I've figured, it's less than a tenth of an acre, so there shouldn't have to be any mitigation. Less than a hundred feet of creek impact and, you know, so, yeah, it should not come expensive across.
Traffic study is going to come back phased?
Most likely.
That's the way, if, that's the way Steve's going to do it. I've seen him do it in the past and this is what makes sense based on what the impacts are. I mean, it's, see that all over the place, Greenpoint, that's the exact same thing Greenpoint did. They came with a phased approach. We're not building a thousand houses today, we're building a hundred today. Another hundred two years from now, so they phase in there.
Where's the value of get a phased, hypothetically table this to the next meeting and require a study and it comes back phased, then?
What do we gain though?
Gain?
Gain nothing really.
Well, I think we know at the end of the day, it's going to be a roundabout.
I mean, their own engineer is saying so. I mean, it comes down to.
Basically, when does that roundabout trigger happen? So the roundabout trigger happens the minute you want full access.
Yes.
We want full access right now, the roundabout's triggered. We want full access when they build the main sanctuary, the roundabout's triggered, so it's.
Right. So I'm trying to determine the difference between table it and say, traffic study has to be done, it's going to come back phased.
I don't know that Steve will be able to get a traffic study to you in two weeks.
Yeah, well, regardless, the difference between approving it, but then before anything happens, there has to be a traffic study done. Where's the difference in that?
I don't know that there's a ton of benefit there. I think, I think we're still at the issue that we've been on our calls and we're still at the same issue.
We're going to get locked into owing.
Who's going to pay for this roundabout? And until we figure that out, then we're going to, we're kind of at a standstill. We can rezon the property today. If they put in a right in, right out and go ahead and build the property the way it is, we all know what's going to happen in a few years. We're either going to go back to the church and ask them to build it and they're going to say, well, you know, we're not going to build it now. You gave us a right in, right out. And I don't blame you, I'd say the same exact thing if I were you. And then we would have to, at that point, try to figure out how we're going to fix the intersection. You know, this is, as much as I hate to put it this way, it's like any other developer. If we have any other developer, we require them to put in the infrastructure that we know they need in advance. And if we know that that's what they need, then we need to figure out how we're going to do that and figure out how we're going to pay for it and all that before we move forward with the development. We wouldn't let any other developer do that.
Other developments have been phased before.
Yeah, it can be phased. I agree. It can be phased. Yeah, it can be phased.
It can be phased, but by your own admission, we all know where this is going to end up. All know. You can phase it for right now, this is fine. But we know three years, five years, whatever it is, we're going to have to have that roundabout.
And the church is not saying they're not willing to pay for it. Point in time, but they know it's coming. Give them years to raise money or work with the government or politicians and kind of even kill to make it all work and everybody happy. That's the plan. They know it's coming.
They'll pay for it now?
I don't know that y'all would agree to that, would you?
What's that?
I would put in the condition that you'd pay for it if it was found needed.
Well, I don't like to handcuff them.
I don't think that's going to happen.
Because if Congressman Allen wants to bring a check down here to them, I sure don't, I'm not opposed to them accepting it. Or however, so.
Yeah, I mean, in a very convoluted way, it actually assists you in putting pressure on getting other funds. To Ms. Malier's point about, or query about requirements for three years, no construction, construction hasn't begun revisiting.
That's already in place for five.
No, it's automatic at five. Well, it's not automatic.
It's not automatic, but it's.
The option, the option arrives at five.
Mention all about coming back in.
Right. What about the consideration of upon completion or upon nearing of completion by a certain time? Completion, not beginning of construction. A reevaluation. Is there, is there a possibility of some sort of contingency for that?
If we had, if we had a phased approach to their development, like if we had a developer and Bo's done these before, where they'll come in and say, phase one looks like this, phase two looks like this. And if we knew what phase one, phase two, phase three looked like, and then we knew that at the end of phase one, it would trigger a full service access, then we could do that.
That's how we need to do it.
So that being the case then, there would be advantageous to potentially table this for a traffic study. To your question of which one, what we would gain from that.
Just a suggestion, could you make your motion that the traffic study must be completed prior to the first phase starting?
That's what I was.
And that the traffic study must be followed based on the phasing. So if the traffic study says after phase three, the roundabout isn't required, then they get no, the sanctuary is phase four.
Right.
That's what I was implying before, that if you say you pass it, but then there's a phased study, you have to comply with the phased study.
Right. I think that's a, that's a good condition. Make them comply with their own traffic study. Now, we'll have to review the traffic study to make sure that it's thorough. GDOT's going to be really deep into this traffic study as well. GDOT's going to review every bit of it about the roundabout. They have to. I think that's probably your best option is either phases to the traffic study.
I need that traffic study updated.
Absolutely. It can't be a one and done because we're looking eight years out before you start phase four. So we'd have to revisit those traffic numbers.
So would that condition follow the properties? If for some reason they get to a certain phase and the congregation says, we cannot pay for a roundabout for traffic circle? Then if they sold this to somebody else, the new owner would have to be tied to these conditions?
They're going to be stuck to that, yes.
Well, this is an S one zoning.
They're going to have to rezonate.
They have to rezonate. This is S one zoning, so it'd only be for them. They would have to, whoever the new.
Well, with a DOT study on the record, that would be an albatross around your neck in a sail. I just want to be very clear.
Thank?
Yes.
Anybody else comes to come?
Where's this coming?
They're not having this conversation again.
Right. That's right.
Not having this conversation.
That's right.
Or any conversation if they think.
So we're talking about requiring the traffic study and a requirement that the structure be tied to the phased traffic study. An approval.
So phase one of their project could not be approved for construction until we have an approved traffic study.
Right. For phase one.
No, no, for the whole project.
For the entire project.
For the whole project. So the traffic study must come in knowing what their ten year plan is.
Right.
Traffic study is based on that ten year plan. Each phase will trigger a different part of that traffic study.
Update it every.
Then every, you know, every.
But that's.
Update the traffic.
Well, that's what I'm asking about is I'm asking. Well, that's what I'm asking about is I'm asking about if it's an eight-year phase, eight, phases over eight years. Is phase one going to be reviewed at any point in that eight years?
Could be. I think you, I would think that every two years, we need to update the traffic numbers.
Do I need to make that a condition or is that part of staff?
I think you would, I think you would make it a condition.
That's, that's, that was my question was, we're going to have all of it laid out in front of us upfront. But everything's going to change every year. So at that point, what good is having everything laid out in, upfront if by the time we get halfway through it, all cards are.
Right.
Been turned over. So the only way I can see to fix that is to require revision, revised traffic study on a two-year basis, three-year basis?
Update all the numbers every two years. And their plan may change. Now, your, your, your size of your sanctuary might have to increase. We hope it increases.
They'll do it by the year, not by the phase.
Saying update.
Up, update the traffic study every two years.
Not by the phase. Because within two years, they could get two phases done.
But it's tied to.
That's, that's a good point. So God had a great idea. He, instead of just saying every two years, it's with every phase. So have.
With every phase.
A full-blown traffic study today, phase one.
But when you start on phase two, you've got to.
You have to have it.
You've got to tie in, it's a cumulative.
But when they do phase two.
You've got to revisit phase one as well, once you go on to phase two.
Update your traffic.
Phase three, you have to update the previous two and, and so on.
Right. Does that make sense, Bo?
Yeah. Think time was short.
It is.
Three. Traffic study.
Well, we're talking four years and, and being across where you're at, we've got a lot of interest. Tomorrow, we could mount an ounce Google, I hope, but.
Matt, don't set the pressure.
Be very careful what you say.
Jeez, oh Pete.
Um.
He didn't say that.
Well, you know what the news.
I was, I was making that up completely.
Did you print that? They're going to laugh at you.
All right, give me a second here. And if you have anything to say while I'm writing this, go ahead.
Well, one thing that, that I'm thinking that we might should do is to go ahead, Bo, and figure out, get a bid for what the traffic circle is going to cost. I, I think that would be helpful. Uh, if it, if it was three hundred thousand dollars, then, uh, I think between the church and some folks that, that may be willing to help us with this, then it's certainly doable. If it's a million dollars, then we're probably going to have to step back and think about it a little bit more. Ultimately, I see us having a traffic circle there. And, you know, whether it's in phase one or phase two, I, I, I think the goal would be to have it done early, um, as early as possible. And as, as long as we're just not totally sticker shocked on what the traffic circle will cost, I think that we would be able to work it out and we might even go ahead and work it out in phase one.
Well, it's going to be expensive whenever you do it, but in five years, it's going to be a whole lot more than, we all know that, whatever it is today.
In, in that.
I'm counting on it, you both.
Labor.
In, in that interest, would it be helpful for you to table this, sir? Given, and give some period of time and table this until you can settle these issues?
I think he's working, I think he's working.
I'm working on it. Give me a second. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've been working on this project literally for about a year.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, we've looked at a lot of properties and this is the property that we've settled on. Uh, we would like to go ahead and move forward on this property. Um, I can assure you that what's going to be done there, uh, is going to be done right and going to be done well. That we would never say, well, we got our right in, right out. Now, you guys do what you want to and, and not participate in putting a roundabout in. We, we want to be part of the solution. We want to participate in the cost. Biggest thing, it was just, it was hard for us to swallow one hundred percent of the cost. And I think you understand my points as well. It's right in front, one of the most important properties that Columbia County has, that now the whole world knows about Amazon. And I worked at Club Car for twenty years, so I've known Club Car just about my whole life. Doug, uh, worked, worked with me there as well. Um, so, um, you know, we, we want it to be right and done, done right. And we're, we're going to be happy to participate in that.
I do think, though, that you have passed the official record for length of a discussion since I've been on the.
Well, I thought I was going to sit there the whole time and not say anything, so, uh, sorry. I'm sorry to, to everybody in the audience that this has taken.
It's good. We want this to work.
Good conversation.
We want this to happen. But we just want to make sure that, taking care of, a lot of times, projects go down the, the pipe and all of a sudden, now, we've had not, we've had subdivisions built and the roads fail a year later. So we're just much more cautious of how we put stipulations on zoning to make sure that everybody's covered.
Yeah. Well, and one of my points of, of talking about figuring out how much it's going to cost and get a bid for the traffic circle in front of the property, there's going to be a cost associated with writing up the specs to that bid. Um, and, and I would rather almost spend money doing that than spend money on a traffic circle. Personally, I mean, on a traffic study, excuse me.
But if it's going to come back phased, it'd be purpose.
It will come back phased.
Of forcing the issue to wait, I mean.
But in your words, I still hear you saying participate, that y'all want to participate in it. And so I feel like in the back of your mind, you feel like down the road, the taxpayers are going to pay for a sizable chunk of your traffic.
No, certainly, certainly not a sizable chunk, but I think it's justifiable for the taxpayers to contribute to the cost of it.
And what happens if they don't?
Well, if they don't, then, uh, you know, we, we may ultimately be faced with that decision. If we put phase one in and everything is going great and our church is growing and that's what we ultimately decide to do, then that's what we have to do.
Ready to make a motion?
Uh, I've got something. I'll tell you what, gentlemen, why don't you just stay there? And if you don't like this, then by all means.
Throw something at him.
Will, will, uh, the option to, to table it and, and redress it is on the, just let us know before we vote on it, right? So, all right, that being said, where are we? Page of my own. All right. This is item two, right? Gosh, we're only on item two. I make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from RA to S one for a church campus located at tax map zero two nine, zero two five, zero two seven A, subject to the conditions enumerated in the July sixteenth, twenty twenty Planning Commission report with the added condition that the applicant will provide and adhere to a phased traffic study, acquiring it to be phased. That will be revisited and updated in a cumulative fashion upon the completion of each phase prior to the start, construction of the next phase. Followed along there?
I think so.
All right.
He's good with it.
Somebody's second this quick.
There's a motion.
I'll second.
Is he, hopefully not. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand? Praise the Lord.
Thank you very much.
Again, we all are, are very much in favor of this project, Dean.
We definitely wanted to work with you as much as possible on this. All right.
Mr. Galius, I think the next one's yours.
Yes, uh, we don't need to spend nearly as much time on this, Mr. Chairman. RZ two zero zero seven six, conditional use for massage. Uh, I make a motion to approve the request for a conditional use of massage for tax map zero seven nine zero four five, subject to the condition enumerated in the July sixteenth, twenty twenty Planning Commission report.
Dewey, is this in your district? Trey, another massage parlor in district.
They're not, uh, uh, they're not the horse.
This is twenty twenty, we can all drive.
Second.
It's just. All in favor, raise your right hand?
Fault in the wound, isn't it? I mean, my goodness.
Right hand, motion carries.
To the heart.
Golly. Okay, on to the next one.
I knew you were a tough lady, man, that's just cruel.
Okay, who's next? Let's roll. Mr. Allen?
I make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from RA to S one for use of a portion of the property for storage, construction, equipment and material located on tax map zero one five zero eight zero, subject to the conditions enumerated in the July sixteenth, twenty twenty Planning Commission report.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand?
That is in my district.
Yeah, that one is.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the request for a major PUD revision for tax map zero six seven one four five for a proposed landscape business, subject to the conditions enumerated in the July sixteenth, twenty twenty Planning Commission report.
Second.
Questions?
I do have a question. Is applicant here? Are y'all purchasing the property or y'all leasing the property? You are purchasing the property. Okay, thank you very much.
All in favor, raise your right hand? All opposed? Motion carries, four to one.
I make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from M one and R one to S one for a church campus with associated uses for tax map zero eight zero 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 five.
Second.
You'd like to discuss a roundabout, Nick, or do you want to?
Okay.
All right, we're good.
Come on, brother.
Please, yeah, get, get, get a new rug. You're going to need extra pads for us.
Any, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand? Carries.
And lastly for me, I make a motion to approve the request for a major S one plan revision for property located at tax map zero six seven one one seven B to add an additional building and a school.
Second.
Matt, what's this?
This is an.
I'm getting lost.
Yeah, it's been so long that I read it. This is an existing church on Columbia Road. They're adding some additional buildings to have some, uh, some educational activities.
Ed Caplet in church time.
Question? All in favor, raise your right hand? Carries. Proclamation recognizing the retirement. Have I, have I gotten to that point yet?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Would you like me to read the motion?
Please, thank you.
I make a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing the retirement of Tammy Shepherd from the Columbia County Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand? I will too then. Passes. Legal matters.
Illegal matters.
Request for a view by committee.
Yes, sir.
Five and a half years going strong. Any public comments? Public left, Joe? Executive session.
State, he's not.
That doesn't matter, he's not with the county. I think we should have the executive session right here, don't you?
Do it.
Rock and fire, Commissioner.
All right. I make a motion to approve resolution twenty dash twenty-nine, Declaration of Taken and Order of Condemnation for Portion of Tax Map seven seven eight two five five to obtain permanent easement for the proving, widening, paving, aligning and maintaining state Route twenty-eight.
Second.
Question? All in favor, raise your right hand?
Make a motion to accept donation from Michael and Deborah Hart, parcel zero six five four one nine, Donald Ballard, parcel zero six five two one eight, and Clark Carter, parcel zero five two one nine, to obtain permanent easement in circle for stormwater pipe installation.
Questions?
Second.
I'm, Miss. There you go. All in favor, raise your right hand?
I make a motion to accept the donation from Steve Kaufman, parcel oh seven three oh zero four four, temporary easement for Merrimack subdivision, stormwater repair.
Question? All in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries. May I make any other motions?
All lit as holy, Mr. Chairman. Motion adjourned.
I'll second that one too.
All in favor, raise your right hand? We're out of here.
Got a hot date or something?
I do.
No, no.